Bobrowski.
Ms. Brown.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you all. Hey, Ron.
Hey, Mark. How are you?
Living the life.
Yeah, one time, one time no see.
For those of you who have, who need an update on Groundhog Day, Next Generation Groundhog Day, I highly recommend Palm Springs.
Okay. Is that on Netflix?
It's a, yeah, I think you might be able to get it on Netflix. It's a, it's a regular commercial movie that came out maybe a year ago. It's got a little more edge to it than Groundhog Day, but it's the same basic principle.
I thought you were suggesting we were living at Groundhog's Day.
Well, I've gone through that. Three stages of that.
So, Mark, have you looked at the Housing Choice Initiative stuff?
Yeah, it's pretty interesting, isn't it?
Yeah.
I think the most interesting thing is the new MBTA provision that pretty much is going to put, you know, the onus on you as one of them to provide multifamily in the transit area. And I think, you know, I've, I've, I've always advocated for that. I think it's, I visited a train station out in the Western Woods somewhere just recently opened, not, like, five years ago, six years ago. And I went to the, the town was over 10%. I went to see the town manager on behalf of a major multifamily provider, and I said, you know, we can throw a rock from our property and hit the train as it goes by. And he said, oh, we want detached senior housing there. Why did you get the train station? So they can go to the movies at the next stop? I didn't. So I, I think the one way, the one place I've always thought we were lacking was in a coordinated planning statewide agency. There's no such thing. That link economic development, transportation, job training, housing, there's no coordinated effort.
Agreed.
And now, did you know Don Schmitzum?
I did not.
Oh, geez, that just dates me.
Was he a proponent of that?
For 35 years, he was the patron saint of municipalities at DHCD. He was a Foxborough selectman and a very smart guy, very, very well balanced in his approach. People loved him. But he was the only person I've ever met that would provide planning. You're supposed to get it from your regional planning agency, I suppose, but.
Yeah. You seem to be light on our membership tonight.
I think we got a quorum. I will, actually, can you hear me?
Oh, I see him. I just need to scroll down. I just need him for my notes.
All right, everybody, welcome to the April 29th Planning Board Public Forum Meeting regarding the recodification of our town's zoning bylaws. This meeting is being recorded. I'd like to take a roll call now of Planning Board members. Mr. Coons.
Present.
Ms. Foley.
Here.
Ms. Delicio.
Here.
Mr. Gilbert. Mr. Gilbert. No. Mr. Olney.
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Russell. Okay, I've got one, two, three, four, five of us present. So it's a quorum is met. I, I'm wondering if Sarah Mallis will be joining us tonight, but I think this is a FinCon meeting going on at the same time. So, little prelude, on March 26, 2019, the Planning Board began its efforts to recodify and update the zoning bylaws. Recodification and updating of the bylaws was a recommendation of our 2019 master plan. The Planning Board engaged Mark Bobrowski, a partner in the firm of Blatman, Bobrowski, and Haverty in Concord, Mass. to assist the board in this endeavor. Mark has been practicing land use law for over 35 years. His practice extends statewide and a focus on assisting clients in the public and private sectors with permitting strategy and decision-making, litigation, and appellate arguments. He's worked in one capacity or another in, in half of the state's communities, including the recodification of the ordinances and bylaws of at least 100 cities and towns in the Commonwealth. He's also recodified general bylaws, subdivisions, and regulations, and the administration regulations, regulations in dozens of municipalities. The Planning Board, Town Planner Sue Brown, Zoning Board of Appeals Chair Sarah Mallis, and Building Inspector Paul Orlando have met in public meetings with Mark close to 20 times in the past two years. During that period, the Board has reorganized the bylaws, eliminated repetitive bylaws, eliminated illegal and outdated bylaws, consolidated bylaws, proposed moving certain bylaws into general bylaws, redefined definitions, and added new definitions. This recodification and update initiative is an iterative process. Now that we have our initial changes memorialized, the Planning Board is holding this workshop to solicit input from you, the public. The Planning Board will review the information tonight and decide on whether additional revisions to the bylaws should be made. The Planning Board will then schedule and conduct a public hearing on the revised bylaws. The recommended changes to the bylaws will be presented at our annual town meeting requesting adoption. Before I introduce Mark, I'd like to go over some ground rules. As a reminder, these discussions and recommendations for, by the Board for bylaw changes are just that, recommendations. No bylaw changes are being taken place at this meeting. They are steps in aligning our laws in concert with our master plan. The documents that are being reviewed are available on our town's website. We have a lot of ground to cover, so please keep your questions focused on the zoning changes presented. If we don't get through all the sections tonight, I'll ask the Board to schedule a third forum. Questions on structural or organizational changes should be kept to the end. It expects, it is expected that Mark will be able to answer most questions on our proposed changes. If a question requires an answer from someone else, I will ask the member of the Board, or ZBA Chair, or Building Inspector, or Town Staff to answer. If a question cannot be immediately answered, we'll take note and try to answer in the meeting minutes or document it as such. Mark will start with section number 8.2 and go over the proposed changes. After each section is summarized, I will open up the section for questions and discussion. Please use the hand raised feature on Zoom, and I will call on you in the order listed. I will attempt to get to all the hands raised attendees. Please try to be brief. If you're on the phone, please ask the Chair to be recognized. Time permitting, we'll get to a second round of questions at the end. If your question has been previously discussed, there's no reason to repeat it, and thanks for participating tonight. And Mark, it's, it's all yours.
Ron, can I just clarify something first?
Yes, Sue Brown.
You had, you had said before the annual town meeting, and I just want to clarify that the zoning changes won't be put before town meeting until the fall.
Correct. Sorry.
No? Thanks.
Well, you read my mind. Thank you for putting that up. Good evening, everybody. Mark Bobrowski, my office is in Concord. It's been my pleasure to work with your committee for the better part of two years. I forgot, we started that long ago. We're going to start with Residential Conservation Cluster tonight. This is not the version of Residential Conservation Cluster which is currently section 6.13 in your existing bylaw. Instead, it's a rewrite. You had in your existing bylaw, three separate sections that talked about alternative residential development. One of them was the PRC, which is the old 6.8, and that required a minimum tract area of 50 acres. The second was the old RCC, Residential Conservation Cluster. We kept the name and some of the provisions, but not all of it. And that required six lots or five acres. And then there was a, probably a much older version called Open Space, and that was 6.7 in the existing bylaw. That required 10 acres in one district and 20 acres in a couple of other districts. Long story short, you had no takers. There, there haven't been developments under any one of these old three bylaws. And so I suggested to the committee that we try, my, I, I call it typically flexible development, but the name has been preserved, Residential Conservation Cluster. So the idea here, Sue, if you'd scroll down to the next sections of this. The, the idea is that you can keep going. You can do a, a zero lot line approach to the development of, of land. Let's just call it of land. Residential Conservation Cluster does not have to end up allotted as in a subdivision. It could be a condominium. Keep going down, Sue. As long as, in the design process, these are the things that you consider. Now, these come right from your existing Residential Conservation Cluster, but they're very remarkably like work that I've done under a different name in many other towns. If you go to 826 Modification of Lot Requirements, you can see that the Planning Board encourages applicants to modify lot size, shape, and other dimensional requirements subject to the following limitations. Lots having reduced area or frontage shall not be on an external street on the perimeter. They're going to be inside. The Planning Board may waive this requirement where it's determined that the lots are consistent with the existing development patterns, and 50% of the required side and rear yards are also required in a residential conservation cluster. Under 8.2.7, the basic idea here is that you would submit a yield plan, and that yield plan would be the number of lots reasonably expected to be developed by a conventional plan with all applicable regulations, zoning, subdivision, health, wetlands, and other requirements. That's your basic number going forward of what you could have done if you'd done a conventional plan. In addition, the Board may grant a density bonus to increase that number. Density bonus will not exceed 20%, and it would be awarded on the next page for each additional 10% of open space, or where the Planning Board thinks that the applicant has offered significant amenities to the town. Could be equipment, it could be infrastructure improvements, technical assistance, preservation of land outside the residential cluster at a bonus rate of one dwelling unit to 10% of the maximum number, up to 10% of the maximum number. I should stop here and say that this is a, this is not something I invented. I think Bob Mitchell invented it in Amherst many years ago, or Phil Hare perhaps invented it in Groton 30 years ago. And in Groton, a town that has probably had the most experience with this, not only are they preserving land outside the development site, valuable pieces of property that are being offered for preservation in order to get a density bonus, but I don't think any, I don't think anybody has done a conventional subdivision, at least last time I heard, except for one instance in the last 30 years. So the idea here is incentivize the developer to do the right thing, and that's why the density bonus provision is there. This is not a requirement. Nobody has to do residential conservation cluster. They can do a conventional subdivision. So the way to get people to do this better design is to literally use the, the carrot instead of the stick. There has to be an affordable component. It's 10% of the total number of units, whether they're in the density bonus or the original yield plan. And the units are designed to count on the subsidized housing inventory as local action units. In the types of buildings, you'll see that single family is allowed in all districts, two-family in the RD1 and RD2, and two or three-family and single-family in the G District. And that's because these kinds of development, especially when they're offered as condominium, are attractive for people aging in place. Who wants to mow the lawn when you're my age? Roads will be designed, if destined for acceptance by town meeting, they should be designed in accordance with the town's standards, but otherwise, private ways will be adequate for intended use because it's just a driveway. Parking is two off-street spaces per dwelling unit, and the spaces in front of the garage may count in the computation. Here's something that I think many people will at least question, but a minimum of 20% of the parcel is contiguous open space, and it has to be usable open space. If there's wetlands on the tract, the amount of open space which is wetlands shall not exceed that percentage of the tract which is wetlands. The idea here, your, your other provisions were, were absolutely, in my opinion, discouraging people. 70% in the old PRC, 60% upland in the RCC, and 30%, which I think was more reasonable, in the old open space. But we're, we're trying to draw people in. 20% open space, if it's the right open space, is a, is a lot more than you get in a conventional subdivision. Go down. And ownership of the open space, these are standard provisions that come basically from the statute about who is going to manage the open space. Go down, Sue. Buffer areas will be, because these are going to look a little bit different than your standard next, next-door neighbor, a buffer area is required. And the buffer area is going to basically screen the internal layout of the subdivision from the different layout of the residential neighborhood nearby. Stormwater management to be done in accordance with basically the DEP stormwater management policy. And because this is going to be something likely to be private with required open space, the developer can either create a condo association, or if the developer is determined to lot this, he can do a homeowners association. The decision is a special permit, and the key inquiry is whether or not this is better than a conventional subdivision. Also, you look at the other factors that are in section 11.5, having to do with traffic and utilities. And don't forget, if you're going to do a residential conservation cluster, you also have to do a subdivision if you're going to lot the land. You can't create lots using zoning. The only way to create lots is under the subdivision control law, so that's just a reminder. I've actually seen towns that thought you could create lots this way, and they, 10 years later, were told that their lots had never gone through the proper process. So the idea here is that, my experience, I don't know that it's going to be typical in Manchester by the sea, is that one-third of developers will do this because it really allows them to be flexible and creative. And if you want to see flexible and creative, I invite everybody in the audience tonight to Google ConcordRiverWalk.com, which is right near my office. I was on my planning board when that came through. It's a Bainbridge Island cottage colony in, in West Concord. But there are other examples. Another good example would be Cannon Forge in Foxborough, which has roughly 200 to 300 units, singles, duplexes, and tries, all beautifully fit together in a jigsaw puzzle of community living. There's a tennis court or two, and there's a swimming pool in a community building as well. So it does create a lot of flexibility. I'll go through senior housing, and then I think that's the end of the chapter. Senior housing was intended to replace the language that you had for assisted living facilities. Somebody told me not that long ago that there are 85 million baby boomers who are now obviously well into picking their next home, because I, I think the oldest baby boomers are five years older than me, 1945. I was, no, I was born in 1951. And we're all going, having my experiences with my mother, we're all headed in this direction in one way, shape, or form. So the idea was to make this a one-size-fits-all. It's largely based on Andovers, where I did permitting for senior, capital senior housing on Elm Street. The key question here is, what are we going to do performance standard-wise? So go down to 8.3.4. I should not skip the definition there. The definition, which is back in the definition section, go back, so it's not forward-back, is that a senior facility is a independent living facility, which is basically an apartment building with some common amenities for the residents. It could be an assisted living facility, which is licensed by the state and has a particular meaning. It could be an assisted living facility with a memory unit. It can be long-term care, which is another different license provided by the state with different requirements. Or it could be congregate care, where you can have some or all of these in combination. A good example of congregate care would be Carlton Willard, which is located in Bedford, just off of Route 62. And I believe that's a church-affiliated group. So minimum lot size is that required in the district? You probably want to have a little bit greater height, at least in the general or limited commercial districts, with up to 45 feet. By special permit, greater height can be provided, but it's going to have to go through a hearing process, and the neighbors, of course, are going to turn out for that. Go down a little bit. Building coverage complies with Table 2. Building setbacks, same thing. Again, this is a little bit different than your average neighbor, so 50 feet from the existing dwelling, if it's residential in nature. Accessory structures get a little bit more lenient. Frontage is that required in the district. Where available, public water sewer should be provided, but if it's not, that shouldn't discourage you. Transportation services should be provided in order to help for people to get to the beautiful downtown that you have. Common open space, 10% of the lot area. Parking is as set forth in Table 1. Adequate access for onsite circulation. The average resident, according to the federal government, GAO, of an assisted living facility is an 82-year-old woman who has deficiencies in two or more activities of daily life. So these are not heavily trafficked with cars by, especially by the residents. I remember, just to divert for a second, my mother argued with us for years about taking away her car, so I brought her to a Dave and Buster's, once put her in one of those coin-operated cars, and she proceeded to hit everything while I videoed it, and we haven't had the argument since. Public safety, the, is a direct link to the fire department. Landscaping is required, and we'd like to see some accessory uses, like salons, transportation, sundries for personal consumption, laundry services. Also, many of these facilities have pools, athletic facilities, gyms for the residents to use, and sometimes provide onsite medical service as well, or appointments. So this is again a special permit. It's not a slam dunk. You've got to design this with a developer, and the developer has to make it fit into the neighborhood. So that's the end, I believe, of Section 8, having to do with special residential regulations. And I'll stop there if anybody wants to ask a question.
Yes, I see Sandy with her hand raised. Go ahead, Sandy.
Hi.
Unmute.
Hi, yeah.
Identify yourself.
I'm muting. So can you please?
Could you identify? Could you just identify?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Sandy Rogers, 82 Old Essex Road. Can you please highlight what has been added and what has been changed from the past regulations?
There is a color-coded version of this that's available. The RCC, which this largely replaces, was unlawfully structured. It required a submittal of a special permit by which the municipality could choose whether the conventional subdivision or the alternative residential development would be the one going forward. In a case called Wall Street Development versus Planning Board of Westwood some 10 or 12 years ago, the appeals court declared that process to be illegal. You cannot put a subdivision on a special permit. There are two different laws governing, and one cannot overcome the other. So that was pretty much something which we had to change. The, the other two were deleted in their entirety. The art, the 50-acre version and the old planning, the, I put the chart away here. It was, if you look at your existing bylaw, 6.8 was deleted in its entirety, and 6.7 was deleted in its entirety. And I didn't, I didn't attempt to color-code the old RCC. We just struck it and then replaced it with the new RCC.
Okay, that, I think it's really difficult to follow what is being presented here, and what is truly new from, and what is the intent of, of this section? Is it to make sure that more conservation or open space is used in a development, and that it's not personal lots? And so then the developer can add more density to their buildings? I guess, I, I just like, taking a step back, this really got launched into, and I'm trying to have some type of context for this. Thank you.
Sure. Every developer who wants to develop land has the right to do either an approval-not-required subdivision of land. That, that means that they cut up the existing frontage on an existing road into lots that conform with zoning, or if they don't have that ability, to create new roads and new lots that do conform with zoning. And if they comply with all the rules and regulations in your subdivision, right, that you can't stop them. They're, they're, that is their right to do that. This is an attempt to distract them into doing something better. Now, to some extent, getting them to do this, you can't mandate this. Chapter 48, Section 9, there's a paragraph in there that describes this process, says that "A special permit granting authority can offer a special permit that increases density or intensity of use in exchange for open space, affordable housing, or other amenities." That's a quote. And so what you're doing is exactly that. You're offering an increase in density or intensity of use within reason, within what will fit, because you control it with a special permit. And in exchange for that, you're going to get affordable housing, open space, and/or other amenities. And so the, the idea here is that the developer will do a better job of developing that 10-acre tract than it would, than would be the case if they chose a conventional subdivision as the vehicle for that.
And?
And that's up to the Planning Board to put their feet to the fire. We don't want some obscure corner of the lot as the open space. We want the meadow or the treat area right up front to be preserved, and it's preserved under a conservation restriction.
Okay. And, and is this, I, I think I heard something that this is for a specific zone within town?
No, it's townwide.
It's, this is townwide?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
We, we tried to tailor it a bit to each district, because their lot requirements, a lot sizes and patterns of development have been different. So, for example, you can do this with single-family homes in any district, but you can only do it with a two- or a three-unit building in a couple of, the general district and the LCD district.
What's the general district? I know what the LCD is.
There is a small general district that has a little bit denser development. Sue can probably tell you exactly the streets.
Well, it's, it's the downtown generally.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next question, Mary Foley.
Hi, Ron. Thanks. I don't want to take residents' time, but having heard from many residents in town, I think it would be good to paint a picture, to see how this was works, would work since the prior bylaw was district-specific, and now this is opening it up to all districts. So could we do an example in, say, like District B or District D, where the current lot size for D is just 6,000? So if somebody has a 12,000-foot lot size, or even, you know, say, 25,000 lot size, how much can be built on that?
I, I, I'd need to know more about it. If, we could do this as an exercise if somebody wanted to take a couple of vacant pieces of land, but you'd have to factor in things like steep slope, wetlands. Those would, would be crucial to coming up with what you can do.
Sure, but say like, you know, so just as a, as a, you know, basic. So say it's a flat piece of land. It's, you know, there's no, there's no issues. And by right, there's a portion of District D that can do two-family on a 6,000 square foot. How much could they put on a 12,000 or 20,000 square foot?
Well, the, the question, to flip it back at you, was what could they do there by right under a conventional plan? And that's their, their maximum number of units. Now, if they want to earn more, it'll never be more than 20% of that original number that we came up with, because that's the cap. You can't do any more than that.
Okay, so, so you could only do a two-family in District D?
That's what it sounds like to me.
And then the, the scenario, if you had something in, say, District C, which is a 45,000 lot requirement? So you had, so you had three acres in District C. How many houses, condominiums could you have on?
Well, again, on three acres with a 45,000-square-foot lot requirement, you don't even get two. I'm sorry, you don't even get three. You get two. Two and a large rump left over. So your, your yield there is basically two lots. Now, you can earn some more by dedicating the land that's left over as open space, and if it didn't, if, and that would have to be 20% of the total tract size. And then if you wanted to earn some more units, again, it wouldn't go over 20% of two, which would be one additional lot. So there's your, there's your calculation.
Okay, so the, the scenario of
Okay, so the the scenario of condominiums really wouldn't be happening here?
Well, it condominium is just a form of ownership, so it 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 could be a condominium, and it could be single-family houses. I I see them all the time.
Right, okay. Okay, thanks.
You bet.
Thanks, Mary. Um, Sheila Hill, could you identify some?
Sheila Hill, Two Running Ridge Row. Uh, I attempted to look up the uh, in the CMR seven sixty, the latest version of the state's cluster zoning concepts. I could not find that, uh, wasn't on, wasn't Google-able. Uh, Mark, do you have the latest version of the state requirements for cluster zoning that you can make available?
There are no state requirements. This, the state in the, early on in chapter forty-eight, section nine, said by special permit, you can do cluster development, but it doesn't mean that you can't do something different than what the state long ago put in the state law. And and recently, again, put in the governor's housing bill just a couple of months ago. Towns can do anything that is not preempted by or inconsistent with state law. And we're a home-rule state. Every town has a of its own capacity to invent what they think is best for it, so.
Yes, but we're, we're culling through these bylaws to make them consistent with an apparent document that exists at the state level.
There's no state-level document that dictates anything that we have to do on this. We can choose to follow the state model if that's what you want to do, but if you want to do something completely different, that's up to you. I think that this takes some of the better elements out of the old provisions of section nine, and also embraces some of the governor's recent housing ideas for alternative residential development.
So um, I I I um, I see, or my experience of of your coverage of these, the new bylaws that you're proposing, is very promotionally oriented towards development. Um, you see these changes as making developers eager, more eager to come to Manchester and develop property. I don't know that that's consistent with the needs or wants of many residents in Manchester. So I need to be clear, which which changes? And and this housing uh choice initiative is is part of the context of, I assume, the cluster choices we might make. Or do you not see, does the, does this cluster bylaw change? Is it subjected to the housing initiative, housing choice initiative rules as well?
No.
No, so you're, you're, this is a free-for-all. In other words, you're you're portraying it as we can do anything we want with respect to cluster zoning in Manchester.
I think that's a fair way of putting it, and uh some of the, a lot of towns have a lot of different models. Look at the three things you had that we're uh toying with right now. None of them worked, so.
Well, they're restrictive, so I would say that they.
Then what did you put them in there for?
We work, well, because we don't want to encourage a lot of random development in Manchester.
So what you ended up doing was?
Speak for myself. I I think uh, having the respect restrictive and special permitting uh bylaws, but let's not go back because of, to those three, but I want to ask a question. So it applies to, this would, your your notion of the flexible bylaw would apply to uh all districts, lots of five acres or more, correct?
If that's what it says, yes.
Well, that's what you're proposing, correct?
Yes, and this is just a proposal.
Yeah, so I want to be clear, the way you're proposing. So five acres or more. So we have a District E, for instance, includes many properties. We have many properties of five acres or more. So what you're implying is a developer could buy a house, let's say, on Boardman Ave, which is a five-acre or larger uh piece of property. How many houses and raised, got the house that's there? How many houses by right put a developer place on a five-acre Boardman Avenue property?
What is the underlying zoning requirement in that district?
Two acres.
Acres.
Well.
Two acres.
So if I did a conventional subdivision plan, if it was bone-dry and flat as a pancake, I could put two houses.
By right?
By right.
So you could double the housing on the property?
No, you can put two houses if I do a conventional subdivision on that property. It's a five-acre tract, you know.
But but subdivision would have to be per, special permitted.
No, you can't special permit a subdivision. That was the flaw in your existing regulation, right?
That's what you're eliminating.
Right, that was the flaw. You mandated the special permit. Any developer who chooses this RCC that I've given you as an example is voluntarily applying for the special permit. There's a big difference.
So the RCC is voluntary, he's voluntarily applying for the special permit?
Correct.
But does not have to if he he or she denotes it as a subdivision.
He or she could go conventional, and in a, I'm just trying to keep my my numbers straight here. You said it was a five-acre tract, and the district requires two acres?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's a conventional subdivision of two units.
And you would, and you're saying that doesn't require a special permit?
No, you can't do that. That's the, that's the inconsistency that you had in your existing regulation. You would, you were, you were then requiring a special permit.
Okay, so just to be clear then, under the RCC, it's open to doubling the housing on that lot?
No, you you've completely misconstrued what I just said. It's the same. You're starting out the same, whatever you could.
Five-acre lot, you have, you have two, 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 two-acre minimums. I mean, you can put, if there's one house there now, you can put two.
On a five-acre lot, it it and and the requirement in the district is how many acres?
Two.
Then, you know, that's two-point-five houses.
Yeah.
Right, so that's what, that's your basic number going forward under the residential conservation cluster, two.
And that does not require a special permit. That's what I'm trying to be clear about.
The conventional subdivision does not require a special permit.
But this new, but this new law is by special permit, so in effect, it is more onerous than a subdivision.
Well, that's why I keep asking, which one requires a special permit? And the answer is RCC, but I don't seem to hear that. So RCC requires a special permit, correct?
Yes.
Yes, because you want to make sure in giving the developer some advantages, that he's also giving something back to you. It's designed to be a win-win, and the only way to make sure that it is a win-win is to have it done by special permit.
And I would ask if there's any other questions.
Can we, we, do we have any other questions, um?
I can, if I can share a screen with you, I can show you the provision of the governor's new housing law, which defines open space residential development. And I don't think that what we're proposing to do here is inconsistent with that. Uh, let me get back into Zoom for a second.
It may be, and it would ideally be consistent with it.
Can I share? I think it is consistent.
Yes, I I made you co-host. Mark, you can go ahead and share.
Okay, so this, I'm sorry, it's red, but I was calling it out to people at a seminar to differ it from the existing status. So this is the governor's new open space residential development. Let me get that a little bigger, so we're not all gonna die. So, "A residential development in which buildings and accessory are clustered together into one or more groups, separated from adjacent property by intervening open land, permitted only on a plot of such minimum size as the town may specify, uh, which is divided into lots with dimensional controls for those varying according to the bylaw." This, this is essentially what you're doing. This is two months old, by the way. And if you were to do this and call it, you know, one of the open space types of residential development, I believe that the new law says the town meeting could adopt this by a vote of fifty uh percent rather than two-thirds.
Mark, can you send a a copy of that document to me or to Ron?
I'll send it to Sue. This is my presentation.
I'd like it sent, I'd like it sent to me or to Ron.
Well, I generally work for the town, so I'll send it to somebody in the town, um, Sue.
I can accept it, Mark.
Sue and Ron, yeah. Happy to, you want me to send it now?
Well, that, that's, that's, no, hold on, that that's dated twenty-twenty. You said it's two months old.
Well, no, that's my coverage area. That's what I'm talking about. I I talked about cases from here to here. And it, because it was an MCL in March, and the law had just passed, I knew they were going to be interested in it. So I put it in as a bonus.
Thank you for sharing that, Mark. Ron, perhaps we can move on.
Yes, okay, um, Christina, you had a question?
I do. I just, um, I guess I'm just thinking about Mary's example, and specifically, it was in the D district. If someone had a property that was twelve-thousand square feet and they had frontage, that would then, as we're saying, encourage someone to potentially demolish a house, and then be able by A and R to split the property and then build two, two families. So then, um, how does the calculation, if someone then decided a density bonus on two, two families? What does that look like?
It it it's the number of units that you get total, not the number of.
There's an extra ten percent. How do you do extra ten percent of two units?
You don't. It, you round down.
So is it zero?
It's zero.
So should we correct that for this particular district? Because then, I mean, that doesn't seem consistent. Are they going to, are we going to ask them for some kind of payment, or, I mean, that's confusing.
Well, I can certainly indicate that fractions will go one way or the other, or that fractions won't count at all. And we'll, I think we should talk about that as a group after the discussion with the public tonight.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, um, Mark, did you want to go on to section nine, special districts?
Sure. Um.
Is that being shared?
So, section nine is the existing regulations that you have that are um, just typically overlay districts. I think all three are. None of this has changed. Flood control overlay district is what you have. It's just renumbered. Flood plane overlay district is just renumbered. And the last one, I believe, is called groundwater protection overlay district. And that's not been changed either. There just been, they've just been renumbered and put in the same chapters, that all these overlay districts have a common uh place in the zoning. And there's, you know. So that, that was change made specifically to talk about eliminating subdivisions from a special permit, right? So residential development on a lot replaces the old language of subdivisions on a lot. We can, are required to have a special permit. Same thing there. Same thing there. And just some grammatical changes. And that is just something that ought to be put into regulations rather than uh in the cluttering up the zoning bylaw. So the Special Permit Granting Authority has the power to adopt regulations that implement the basics of the bylaw. These are more appropriate as regulations.
Any questions on section nine? Anne Harrison, would you can unmute?
This is Anne Harrison, Tex Point Road. Um. This is more, this is a pretty general question. Um, it appears to me that some of the changes to the zoning bylaw uh make uh the zoning um less restrictive, and others either leave it as restrictive as it, leave it as restrictive as it is. I I'm not intimately familiar with all of the changes, but it appears to be a mix of the two types of zoning change that the state has just required, just suggested be voted on separately. How, how can we do this?
It's a good question. The Attorney General sent around a um, an inquiry the other day, asking communities whether anybody was going to take advantage of the fifty percent rule, or whether everybody was just going to go, because everybody's going to town meeting now, uh, whether people will be taking advantage of the the old rule, which is two-thirds. I didn't answer yet on your behalf, because I don't know. I am recodifying the city of Medford right now at the same time, and they revamped their definition of accessory apartment, which is the old language to accessory dwelling unit, ADU, which is the governor's language, and they will be taking advantage of that when it's proposed to the city council. I think what it, what it really amounts to is that you're going to have a base warrant article for the zoning first. That's the two-thirds vote. And then the second warrant article ought to be the fifty percent ones. It'll be a scattershot of of a couple or a few things. And then if it passes, it all gets put together into the same book. That's the way I would do it.
Thank you.
I think you need to have the chassis before you have the fancy parts.
Yeah, I'm concerned that this is so integrated, it will be difficult to to pull the pieces apart. Um, you're starting with definitions, and 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 does the change of a definition, how does it impact each time it's used?
Well, it's, we've tried to make that um, in those cases where that would be applicable, we've tried to say in section eight point two, the following terms will have the following meanings. By, and so by limiting that way, uh, it's clear that that's a definition that's just applicable to one particular section. For example, in the, in the section you're looking at here, um, you can see that there are, in ten point one point three, that there are many definitions when we go to definitions under large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations. And those are just, when you get to section twelve, it says, for the purposes of section ten point one, these definitions will apply.
Thank you.
Okay, so having said that, um, this is an energy section. You're one of the few towns I've ever worked in where you have both um solar energy systems and wind systems authorized. There's, you know, because you're a coastal community, that makes sense. The only good wind for harvesting in Massachusetts tends to be on the coasts. So I haven't changed anything other than moving things uh and renumbering them. I want to give a word of caution with regard to large-scale solar systems. The uh Land Court has ruled that large-scale ground-mounted, or any type of solar energy system, for that matter, roof-mounted, is entitled to the same um treatment as a a church or religious purpose, uh nonprofit educational purpose, or a childcare center. And those are the so-called Dover uses in chapter forty-eight, section three. Judge Piper ruled that in a case from where, and in a remarkable moment, I wish I was there, he actually read that into the docket, and I have a copy of that case. I think I've shared it with the committee. So just, just be aware of going in that limiting large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic to a specific district, or roof-mounted to a specific district, is like what happened in Dover back in nineteen forty-nine, where churches were not allowed in the town's residence districts. And that's, that's an evolving area of the law. I'm not, I I'm mindful of the precedent at the trial court level is not what it would be at the appeals court level or the SJC. And we haven't changed the basics of your uh solar provisions here. We've kept them as they are, but I did want to make sure everybody understood that. And then the next one you'll see is wind. And again, we kept it as is, just with some renumbering. And I mean, I I'm, I do always, uh, as we head towards town meeting, I do always provide. And I mean, I, I'm, I do always, as we head towards town meeting, I do always provide a copy of the last draft of this to town council. And generally, they're kind enough to give me a phone call, talk to me about any things they may find troubling. Sometimes if they missed something like what I just mentioned, I will bring it up so that they're aware. And of course, I know your town council quite well.
I just want to mention the planning board is also trying to put together a document of changes, table of contents changes, where laws have gone. So we're working, we, we have a small committee now working on that to try to make this a little easier and more palatable going forward. Okay, so on section 10, I see Sue Brown have, you have your hand up?
I, Ron, I just wanted to offer a clarification or some comfort to Anne to let her know that, that Mark and and others have, are working with Ellen Wilson already on how to handle this at town meeting. So it's not, we're, it's well in the thought process so that we hope that it will not be confusing. I just wanted to offer that assurance that we're thinking ahead on that. Thanks.
Thanks, Sue. And Mary, is that from a residual hand or new hand?
That's a new hand. Thank you.
Okay.
I just wanted to ask Mr. Bobrowski, since we hadn't gone over the floodplain bylaw as a board. I do know that in 2020, there was some new model floodplain bylaw requirements, I guess. And are we going to be incorporating any of those into this? I know, for example, one that jumped out to me was assigning an administrator of a floodplain administrator for the town?
If there are changes in the model, I can dig those out and we can talk about that as a committee. Nobody, I, I don't recall anybody telling me that there had been new drafts prepared in-house or, or warrant articles passed before, beyond what I got when I got the base document.
No, and I think this probably occurred in the middle of this two-year process. I think it would be good to incorporate that into our changes.
That's a good idea. I, I'll certainly work with Sue to get that. And it should be pretty easy to fix these ten, these tend to stay the same.
Yeah, so, so we can sit together as a board. And, and again, I know it, it will be to the town to decide who the floodplain administrator is going to be and all that type of thing. They, they need to be named in the bylaw.
Yep.
Thank you.
You bet.
Section 11, Mark, is up.
Okay, so this is everybody's job description. I'm just making a note to myself about the floodplain. Okay, so there's some new things in here, but we, we basically kept the old themes. The building inspector is the inspector of buildings. We just added some language to clarify. Go, go back up to, thank you. Down a little bit to enforcement. So the inspector is enforced. In addition to being responsible for purposes of the bylaw, the inspector is also responsible for enforcement of conditions set forth in a site plan approval, special permit or variance. That's case law speaking. Noncriminal disposition would be a new procedure in town. And you, you still have the penalty in 11.1.2 of 300 bucks for each offense. Not many people know that it's difficult to get that because it's a clumsy procedure. You can't just find somebody in town hall $300 a day. You've got to bring them up on criminal charges before a magistrate in the district court. And the magistrate after a show cause hearing can mark it over to a jury of six. And then there's a trial. And after the trial, you can get that fine. 11.1.3 is a traffic ticket, and it's a lot easier. The numbers that we agreed upon were 25 for the first, 50 for the second offense, and 100 for the third offense, and 200 for each one after that. There is an appeal provision for these kinds of tickets, if you will. And it tends to be a little bit easier on everybody to go in that direction. The ZBA, none of this has changed. We did shorten up the wording of their powers because the old statute was widely incorporated into this. And any, everybody today knows to Google mass gen laws, and you can look at chapter 40, section 10, for variances. It's all there within the two flicks of a finger. So one important thing here on variances is the second sentence under number two. No power at the ZBA to have the ability to grant use variances. However, in the LCD, the board may find that a use variance is warranted. The statute says if you're going to grant use variances, you have to be explicit about it. And the rest of that just states the normal powers of the board. So you can see a lot of this that's being wiped out here, blanked out, is language that just repeats the statute. And then if the, hey, if the ZBA gets this section, why not the planning board? So we added all of this as new stuff. And the powers of the planning board are somewhat less in terms of a number, special permits when designated, and site plan approval under 11.5 and 11.8. And then special permits, the language we've put in is language I've used in pretty darn close to 100 cities and towns, if not more. And I, I mean, just to give you an example, those are the criteria in the Dedham zoning bylaw, which we use to do special permitting for legacy plays. And they, they, they've worked very well. So do we need it? Does it have suitable traffic and pedestrian safety? Does it fit into the utilities if that in fact is going to be asked? Neighborhood character and social structures, impacts on the environment, and fiscal impact. It's not applicable in every situation, but if you have a large proposal, it's always interesting to know just what the, you, you can figure out the gross tax revenue, but what is the cost on municipal services? I, I recall permitting a Walmart for the town of Leicester many years ago. They had actually zoned for it. Walmart proudly bragged that they would be giving us $175,000 a year in gross tax revenue. But at the same time, they announced after we did the impact study that they would be also creating 800 police calls at the local police department. So let's start subtracting some money out of that $175,000. I, I don't say that that should be the be all and end all of the decision-making process, but it is interesting to know. And then the other stuff is pretty basic, just referring. I kept your old conditions on certain types of conditions that you seem to want to remind the SPGA they can put in. Those are in your existing regulations. The referral provision is in your existing regulations. And these are just statutory reminders that lapse for a special permit is something that happens if you don't start work or use within 36 months. That's a, that's a change from your existing regulations, which I believe are at 24 months. The statute was amended in August of 2016 to allow towns to choose to go to three years. You know, maybe that was a little ambitious before the pandemic started. I probably had it in there before the pandemic started, but now that the pandemic has given us the experience it has, 36 months sounds much more reasonable to me than 24 months. And then why don't we stop there? Because this gets into a little bit more change.
All right, on Christina.
Thanks, Ron. I just wanted to say for the record, our agenda only has section 8.2, just to be clear. We didn't put this on the notice. So just putting that out there. And then my second comment was that if we go back to the planning board description, I don't know if this was cut and paste, but it hasn't been discussed as a board. But there's a new element in there, and we, as I said, we have not discussed that. It was the alternate member.
Oh, the associate member? That's a statutory provision. I, I think we talked about whether or not you wanted to take advantage of it.
Yeah, no, we haven't discussed it. Something, we, we don't have that.
Yeah, it's, it's in the statute. A lot of boards don't. It was badly botched by the legislature. It only allows the associate member to vote on special permits, nothing else. So that, I wish that the statute was a little bit more clearer. Let's put it that way.
Okay, 11.6.
No, let's, oh, if there's nothing else up to 11.6, that's fine. So you had site plan review in your existing zoning. However, Sue, you're going to correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that it referred to this as site plan special permit.
I'm sorry, I was checking on something. And I just want to, I just want to note, the agenda says that we will review the remainder of the bylaw beginning with section 8.2. It doesn't, it doesn't stop us at 8.2. We know that that was the intent, and that's what it says.
Okay, no, I'm sorry. I, I read that wrong. I'm sorry. My apologies.
That's okay.
So your existing section 6.9 is called site plan review special permit.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, there is no such thing as a site plan review special permit. It's, those are two different devices, procedural devices that you've melded together into an illegal one. The law on site plan review is not the same as the law for special permit. A special permit can be granted, granted with conditions, or denied. Site plan review according to case law is approval with condition or approval, but not denial. There is, there is a stray footnote in an old case that says site plan review can be, can be done when the use is just so out of whack with the neighborhood that the impacts are unable to be attenuated. But there's never been a case, and all judges since that case have cited the rule as I just did. So site plan review here generally applies in a couple of different circumstances. One, if the use is subject to the applicability section, and it is as a right, otherwise, it goes through site plan review. Or if the use, it requires a special permit and it triggers the eligibility section, it may get site plan review from the planning board, and then the special permit from the ZBA. Or arguably, the special permit could be at the planning board. And so the planning board would merge the procedures for site plan review and special permit because a special permit subsumes site plan review. And those are the two ways in which it's used. And it's used that way all across the Commonwealth. And this is typically a majority vote, not a super majority vote. That would make it a special permit. And some of the stuff that you had with regard to existing and proposed submittal requirements is right there on page 94, 95. These additional applications are still there. You had no criteria for how to decide a site plan decision. We, we didn't want to make it clear that if it's an unusually simple thing, there is a waiver possibility of technical compliance. And then the decision criteria go down to the next page. And there they are. Those, I think, I think those are your old ones. And those are, those are pretty good. You had provisions on performance guarantees, which we kept. And the release of the guarantees, that's part of your old regulations. It's generally, it's consistent with the subdivision rules and regulations. So these four provisions were added at the end. You had no lapse provision. Site plan approval shouldn't be forever if you haven't taken advantage of it. So we made it for two years. It's good for two years unless you start up. The board can, of course, adopt reasonable regulations, the fee as well. And here's a really important thing about site plan approval. The court has ruled that if site plan approval, if there's no appeal provision in the bylaw, then the appeal of a site plan decision by a neighbor, for example, has to wait until the building permit application comes into the building inspector, and the building permit is issued or denied. Then the site plan can be appealed when the building permit is issued through to the ZBA. So make no mistake about it, that court adopted method for appeal would put the ZBA in charge of the planning board. And it would also make for an enormous amount of waste of time, possibly between the planning board decision and the ZBA decision. So many years ago, I started putting in section 11, 613 in other people's bylaws, that the appeal of the site plan decision should go directly to court. And it's been litigated in a number of places, and that will work. So there was some doubt at the beginning in some people's minds, but there've been at least a dozen cases now that say that this is okay. And I think it makes a lot, it makes it a lot cleaner. The applicant, I mean, think about the poor applicant who gets denied site plan approval, or, or the applicant who gets an approval with 50 conditions, 25 of which he or she has no intention of complying with. That would make them generate an application for a building permit they know will be denied, only so that they can take their appeal to the Board of Appeals. That's not fair either. So doing it the court fashioned way in the absence of any appeal language is something that I think everybody agrees is not a good idea. And oh, by the way, site plan review, this is really important, is not mentioned anywhere in the statute, except in the governor's new housing provisions, but it doesn't define site plan review. It just refers to it. Site plan review is entirely a creature of local government. I think I'll stop there, and then I can do these last two ones.
Any questions? I think with clean mark, we can go to the next.
Site plan review is a really good tool when, when used properly. Just to give you an example of what you probably are headed for in some cases, I think Andover does it as well as anybody. I'm about to apply for a project in Andover, and I know I need a special permit, and I know I need site plan approval. So I'm going to apply at the same time to both boards, but they have worked it out between the two boards that the ZBA will open its hearing and refer me to the planning board for site plan approval. And the trust between those two boards is so good that the planning board will get into the weeds with me, and they will go through the process. And they'll tell me, condition this, redraw that, move it over there. And only when they're done do I get to go back to the ZBA, which has continued the hearing all along through this. It could take four or five meetings with the planning board, but when we're done, I go back to the ZBA. They look at the planning board's handiwork. They incorporate the planning board's conditions, and they vote up or down on the approval of the special permit. I think that's a really well-managed way to do it. All right, so you may have followed my experience in Wenham four or five years ago, when Cross Keys proposed to open a drug and alcohol rehabilitation facility called Cross Keys. It was a, it was in a single family home, had a number of bedrooms. There was some talk between the building commissioner and the proponent. The building commissioner waved it through. When the townspeople found out about it, there was a bit of a, of a hubbub. One of the selectmen, at, at a meeting called by the Board of Selectmen, called, basically indicated his, his lack of, of support. It went downhill from there, and it ended up in federal district court. Case was settled. The town's insurance company had to be called. You probably have the exact same insurance company. And at the end of the day, it could have all been avoided. So the, the whole premise here is that the Federal Housing Act amendments and the ADA, which do provide coverage for people with disabilities or handicapped, each statute uses the term differently. And the problem is, is that unless you handle this adeptly at the start, it is a landmine for municipalities, because any offense would be, in the, any offense in the category of deliberate intentional discrimination, discrimination in effect, or failure to grant a reasonable accommodation would be a civil rights violation. It would subject the town to attorney's fees and costs. It would also subject the town to other penalties under the Civil Rights Act. So instead of putting this in the lap of the building commissioner, the idea here is that any request for a reasonable accommodation goes to the Board of Appeals. And that way, the board can call the town lawyer and have the lawyer there from the get-go. I got a call two weeks ago from a town, I'm not going to tell you the name of, where the chairman of the ZBA told me what was happening there. And I, I, I said, if you called your town lawyer, he called me because I was the planning board's lawyer for many years. And the planning board chairman said, call Bobrowski. I talked, he had not talked to the town council yet. So I immediately said, you, you have to get on the phone with them right now. I gave them town council's cell phone number so that they wouldn't go down the same path when him, went down. All requests initiated at the reason, at the ZBA and go down a little bit more, Sue. So it's basic application. The question before the ZBA is going to be after the public hearing is been set up is whether the requested accommodation is reasonable. That's the job of the proponent. And then the burden shifts under the federal law, whether it requires a fundamental alteration of a legitimate city policy and whether the requested accommodation would impose undue financial administrative versions, versions on city government. That's, I think, we're still working here off the markup and I think that's obviously town. And then after the, the debate has been had, its public hearing request can be granted, subjected to specified conditions or denied. The, there was a symposium held by the Attorney General, who I want to say now it's probably seven or eight years ago. And the idea was for her to instruct municipalities about the peril of not knowing this. And I think the only city or that had adopted special procedures at that time was New Bedford and they had done it through the Office of Inspection Services. So I got their stuff and I, I kind of turned it into a bylaw and they're probably 10 or 15 towns since then that I put this in. And I just think it makes everybody more aware of what should be done here and what should be done properly. The next section is site plan review for Dover amendment uses. It only applies to B1, B2 and B3 in the table of uses. Those B1, B2, B3 uses are religious purposes. B2 would be the exemption in section three for nonprofit, secular or governmental schools and B3 would be childcare centers. The idea here is pretty much the same. When an application comes in from a church, a school or a childcare facility, it comes directly to the building commissioner and many times the building commissioner is on the hot seat because some of the educational uses in particular are, are a little bit out of, off the beaten path. For example, facilities like nonprofit counseling centers for recovering drug and alcohol abusers would be Dover if they were nonprofit. Some sober homes would qualify under Dover. Also, homes for people that are special needs and require counseling or educational services would be Dover. So again, the building inspector's on the hot seat. Instead of doing that, let's put it over to the planning board for a limited site plan review. And the questions on the scope of site plan review are 11.8.3. Does it qualify? The statute's very clear about who qualifies for Dover amendment relief. And then it limits the local regulations to reasonable ones regarding bulk height of structures, yard sizes. That's quote from the statute. So this is a much more reasonable process for everybody. If the, if the building inspector says no, then the only remedy for the church, the school or the childcare facility is to take that decision to the ZBA and in most towns, the proponent would need a vote of four or five. The better opportunity for reasonableness here is to take it initially to the planning board where the vote would be three to two or four to three in your town. So that's a better and less contentious way of doing it for all concerned. And I think that's the end unless I put in repetitive petitions at the end here, which I keep going. Keep going. Looks like that is the end. And the rest of the bylaws definitions.
Okay. We want to go over these definitions, Mark, I would think.
Well, in fact, I would choose, I would choose to do this like the budget at town meeting. If somebody has a specific question, then they can ask. I, I added that the adult entertainment definitions because you had none, but you did have a provision about this free speech. So we want to be clear who's covered and those are standard definitions that you'll see in 100, 100 bylaws across the Commonwealth. Agriculture required a definition assisted living residences. There's the reference to the state licensing procedure. Childcare center, there's the reference to the state licensing procedure. Essential services is an attempt to define what is called a public service corporation in chapter 48, section three. It's a quasi-monopolistic thing like a water tank or a telephone transfer station. And those are entitled to special treatment. Family daycare, home, large and small are defined in the statute. There's your definitions for the groundwater district. And you can see they're indented and they go on for a page or so. The kennel is defined by statute. So we just kept that. There's your solar energy facility definitions. There's the large megaphone that appears in the current existing bylaw. Marijuana has their own definitions. Medical clinic has a statutory definition. That's the CMR that defines it. Group together all of the motor vehicle things by changing car or automotive to motor vehicle. There's your wireless definitions. School age childcare program is a statutory definition. Senior housing, those are all the definitions. And there's your wind energy conversion definitions for 10.2. And as always, we end with yard or zoning act in your case. So I invite you to peruse those more closely if you'd like. And of course, the committee's going to be meeting again. And if anything seems awry there, just bring them to our attention.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Sheila, you have a question for Mark? Or a comment? I think you're muted.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you. Thank you. My question is, is about the process of, of this evening's meeting as a public forum. Have you, do you feel, Ron, that it's been successful in terms of, of you, we've had three questions? You know, as an observer, I'm, I'm watching, you know, 600 word screens go by every two seconds. And I'm wondering how useful this has been to you as a planning board to refer to this as a public forum and, and what you've gleaned from the public input?
Well, we've gotten some good, good comments on our first section, our first session back in February. These were a little more, this session, the, the little drier and, and you know, we got some comments here. I think the next, the next step would be to go back with these comments and with, meet with the board and decide which ones we want to incorporate moving forward. There's certain controversial items in the, in this recodification that the board may consider pulling out and having additional meetings with the public on moving forward. But again, it's a process. We will have a public hearing again sometime near the end of the, during the town hall in November on this. I don't know, the board will decide on which bylaw changes we may want to present then. I don't know if we're going to do all of them. There's a lot, like you said, I agree, there's a lot to digest here. There's, these have been posted on the website for a long time now. So the public has, can see what's been yellowed, what's there, what's taken out. So it's been there a long time for people to use and look at. So again, you know, it's a lot to take. Mark's, we've been at this for two years and we're going to, the, the board is going to, I, I've, we're going to form a small committee to kind of roadmap some of these changes and make them simpler. I think Mary and Chris Only and myself have decided that we're going to try to make this a little more palatable for the public and, and easier to digest. So that's kind of where we're heading. And we'll probably meet with Alan Wilson on presentation and maybe Mark and Sue also. So I agree, it's a lot.
Don't be discouraged. You're only on draft eight, I think. I, I've been the City of Haverhill's land use attorney with the city solicitor's help, of course, for about 20 years now. And finally, on draft 18, after seven years, they passed it in November. I was very pleased. And right now I'm working with the new cities. It used to be a town in Bridgewater and they're on draft 14 and they're, you know, they, they get numb, you get numbed by this, but they pick it up again. I think Quincy took five mayors and, and 15 drafts. So sometimes it's easy and sometimes it's a little bit more of a push, but we'll, we'll get there. I'm sticking with you. I'm not going away. My, my purpose is to get this through, not to just deliver three drafts and go home. So we'll keep working at it.
Thank you, Ron, for your answer.
Thank you. Sandy?
Mute here, yes. Thank you for all this effort. This is just sort of a, in support of a different presentation of this information as, you know, if, if you just go to the website, there's a lot of material there. It's hard to know what the latest draft of anything is. When you look at things that are highlighted, you don't know if it's a new addition. You don't know if it was lifted and changed and put in from another section. You guys are really close to it, but from a third party, it's really difficult to follow. So I think it's been very difficult when you've been going through these meetings for, you know, an average resident to really know what is changing and, you know, if there are any implications that you're allowing new use cases in different zones. If you're changing any of the existing restrictions or as someone said, or adding restrictions, it's, it's really hard to, to see. And I think that it's going to be important. I know you're going back to the table, but to do another round that goes through all of the changes with people before you get to a point of just general feedback. That would be my recommendation and observation and thank you.
Yeah, we, we understood. Message received.
Yeah, I know it's a lot. And I think that when you see it all put together without, you know, knowing all of the different directions that it took, it's hard to follow with just an end result. So anyway, thank you for all the effort that you're putting into it.
Thanks for coming. Okay, Christina, is that a residual hand or a new hand?
So I just wanted some clarification on the, on the first, of the affordable component of 8.2. So if there isn't a certain amount of numbers, does the affordable component go away? Or you're not allowed to do the?
Well, we did not put in, many towns put in a payment in lieu for a fraction. I think you're getting into trouble when you do that because.
No, 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 I'm just curious. Are you exempt?
Yeah.
You're exempt. Okay. So this is a true instance. So if there is a property that has 15,000 square feet and they have sufficient, sufficient frontage, they could tear down and build six units.
I don't know how they'd get there, but.
Why?
Unless, because two families are allowed in that district?
Correct. So I'm just thinking that's a big change. I'm not sure if that's the, that's the.
Oh, well, if two families are allowed in the district now, then it's no change because it's, they could do what they could do before.
Correct. But now you're, as you mentioned, you're incentivizing the reason.
I don't think they're going to get very far with 20% of six. Because the cap is 20% of the base number.
But from what I just heard from you, it, you're basically getting rid of it, right? If you don't have.
I think would, I think going forward, this, this provision is, I can see that it's controversial.
It's not. This is just a very dense area and I'm just a little concerned that, I mean, developers already like this area on corners because of the frontage. I just don't want to make it more dense and for, I'm, I'm in this neighborhood, not, yes, I'm in this neighborhood. So it's been a concern and I can foresee it being a problem. I just want to understand it completely before.
I think it would be better, with all due respect, if, if you picked, if we picked specific lots that are.
I am looking at a specific lot and that's what I'm.
I'm not. So like, my point is that if we sat, perhaps Sue and I could do it as an exercise, the building inspector help, we could then come up with the right answer and you would be more informed as to what the, the impact would be. And if we did that in four or five locations, it wouldn't take much time to figure it out. We could share that with people and you could.
I think that's a great idea.
Everybody could understand what the impact would be on a specific parcel that you all know.
I think that's great. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Well, thanks, Mark, and for helping and I'm glad you're not leaving us.
Everybody stay safe.
And I appreciate all your help.
My pleasure. We'll talk off camera and I'll get in touch with Sue. And I'll, I'm going to send you the housing laws that the governor just promulgated in an email to follow as soon as I sign off here.
Post that. Maybe we should post them, Sue, on our site.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, Mark. So for the planning board, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So what are our next steps? Is that part two?
So next steps. So we, we've gotten two sessions from the public and we've gotten some, some good ideas from the first one and some, some today. I think I want, what we want to do is kind of circle back and meet and, and revisit some of these laws with the ideas that we got from the public and choose to incorporate or decide to incorporate or not and get, get another draft out. Then I, I'd like the planning board to talk about maybe some sections where we think are sort of controversial or need to be vetted again or talked about. Maybe, I don't know, say stormwater, for instance, maybe what we would do is if we feel, if the board feels necessarily, we would maybe pull certain things out and have a workshop on those. All leading towards a public hearing probably in the October timeframe. And then have some of the, have all these on the, on the docket for town hall or which I think is more reasonable is probably do this in baby steps and piecemeal, but I'll let the board decide which way we, which direction we want to go on what we want to present at town meeting. Does that sound reasonable?
Sounds good.
Yeah, it sounds fine. Could we ask Sue Brown to put together a sort of a synopsis of the proposals that we heard from these two public workshops?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Chris. I actually have a, I have a, a document that I've been keeping and I should say that I've kept the notes from these public workshops and I've also kept the notes from emails or other correspondence that I've gotten from people who weren't able to attend but passed in their comments. So I've been keeping that and that's what we'll bring to the next, when we next meet on this issue so that everyone can see all of the, the comments that have come in and we can discuss them.
Hey, guys, I, I assume you got my email on this sidewalk, which I overlooked was in the, on this. It was in the, on this, uh, um, mass housing forty B. It's, I think during the afternoon sometime in May. I didn't realize that was in that letter. Just wanted to make the board aware of that. Also that the comment period for mass housing got extended through June. So, uh, we're not in a rush to get the comments, but, um, Sue, did you want, Sue was going to try to compile them. So that's just some, some news off topic. Okay, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the most.
I'll second it.
Sounds good.
Okay, motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. Uh, Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Lucio?
Yes.
Mr. Only?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you all. See you in two weeks.
Night, Ron.
Thanks. Good night.